Assalamualaikum. Good morning to all of our viewers. Welcome to Connections with Aisha Yuki. I am very excited to host a friend and colleague today, Zoheb Kadri. Welcome to the show, Zoheb.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Absolutely. So, the firstborn child of immigrants, Zoheb moved to Texas at the age of 12. After graduating from Saint Joseph's High School with a mother who worked in a pathology lab and a father, who was then an oncologist, Zo had always assumed he would follow in his parents' footsteps and pursue an education in science. Having decided to stay in his beloved Texas, close to his tight-knit family, Zo enrolled at the University of Texas at Austin. Later, having made the decision to switch paths and study the structures of political decision-making that affect all our daily lives, Zo received a Master's of Public Administration from Texas State and a second graduate degree from Rice in Global Affairs. Since finishing his graduate studies, Zo has worked in advocacy roles and on political campaigns here in Austin, throughout Texas and across the country. With volunteerism never far from his mind, Zo has worked with local community groups like Austin Needs Water, the Central Texas Food Bank, and Dell Valley Community Coalition over the last two incredibly challenging years to ensure underserved communities throughout Austin had their basic needs met when confronting both COVID-19 and the devastation to Texas's power grid during last winter's ice storm. In his drive to advocate for all of the people of Austin, Zo has centered his activism with the Texas Homeless Network, Austin Latino Coalition, and No on Prop B. He also serves on the advisory committee for the Travis County Democratic Party. Congratulations, Zoheb, on making it to a runoff for Austin City Council District 9.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, for sure. That is so exciting. I've seen all your hard work and we're just so proud of you. I wanted to start the conversation by asking about your early years and your journey into political leadership. For most first-generation South Asian immigrants, being a doctor or engineer is the coveted career path. How did you develop an interest in political leadership and how did your family come to support your path?
Yeah, I think that bio kind of touched on it. When I first moved to Austin to go to school at UT, I was a bio pre-med student. And I think the thing that kind of shifted my focus is that, you know, as a South Asian and someone whose parents were in medicine, I thought that was going to always be my way of giving back. That was like the only way of giving back. It was through medicine, which is such a beautiful way to give back. The first thing that I noticed in Austin was our unhoused community, living on the streets across from the university. And as a teenager then and even as a young adult now, it's something I don't fully grapple with. I don't fully grasp. I don't fully understand that how in such a wealthy country, state, city, right across from like a major university, a few blocks away from the Capitol and City Hall, are there people sleeping on the streets? And if it gets too hot or too cold, they die. So I wanted to kind of get to the root causes of those ailments of society. So I wanted to go into more civic, public service that we don't think of, you know, that I guess, I don't know, the South Asian community, we don't always think about.
Yeah.
So that was, you know, believe it or not, not as tough of a conversation with my family. They were very supportive, especially my dad. I think I didn't really have a North Star to kind of navigate through, like, what am I gonna do?
Yeah.
So I did do some work at city governments, City of Kyle, City of Houston. But politically, I wasn't, I wasn't really aware, truthfully. I voted in 2008 for President Obama, and that was my first vote. And after that, I don't think I voted again until 2014. And then when the 2016 election came on, I was living in Austin, but I was still registered to vote back where my parents were from, which is Victoria, Texas, which is a red county. And there was a general fear of, you know, what a Trump presidency would look like for our community.
Right.
And as flawed as it was, you know, but when you're, when you're living in fear and your mindset is out of survival, you do what you need to do to survive. So our community as a whole is like, we need to vote in a Republican primary against Trump.
Right.
So I did that, voted in 2016 Republican primary in Victoria County against Trump. Obviously, Trump got the nomination.
Right, right.
Once he got the nomination, there were a few folks there who were like, well, we need to make sure we bleed votes away from him. Obviously, not having, whether it be actually Victoria, Texas, or truthfully here in Travis County and Austin, Texas, not having local political parties come to visit us. Like, we weren't sure what to do. But then a friend of mine is like, well, what if we do work for a third-party candidate to bleed votes away from Trump? So I did that, obviously.
Yeah, it's all about strategy at that point, right?
At that point, it's about strategy, right? So it's like, how do we stop this guy from winning? Obviously, none of that worked.
Right.
I'm got elected. And then right after he got elected, someone who was motivated by him burned down my childhood mosque, which I just showed you the picture. So after that, I was like, you know, I can't, I can't A, be on the sidelines, B, I can't try to, I don't know, take down evil from within. I need to like go be directly a part of this fight. So it did, truthfully, take a while just because there aren't, you know, I was living eventually in Harris County in Houston, going to grad school at Rice, when I fully like jumped into like the democratic world of things.
Yeah.
There were still no like people before me, so I kind of had to like feel it out out of my own. But then I got involved in, in party politics and worked on congressional races and worked for Beto in 2018, when he ran for Senate and came back to Austin and worked at the Capitol and worked for Senator Warren, which I think you might have mentioned that. And since then, just have done a lot of advocacy work now that I kind of know where I'm going. And it's been really fulfilling. And the one thing, whether it's this run or the work that I've done, is that I want to make sure that the next generation or the next ones up don't have the same confusion that I did.
Sure.
Because for me, I was like, I don't know where to go, right? I don't know how to give back. I don't know where to sign up.
Yeah.
So I think that's been a big tenet of this campaign, whether it's a staffer, an intern, a volunteer. You know, obviously, seeing everyone who's come up to be a part of this campaign has meant a lot, especially South Asian Muslims, because I'm like, I didn't have anyone.
Yeah, yeah. No, I know. I mean, I think like, you know, I was gonna touch upon this a bit later too, but it's just 2016 was a wake-up call, right, for a lot of us? And, you know, growing up as millennials in Texas and as immigrants, you know, we've, you know, had it pretty good. And sure, I'm sure we've, you know, experienced a lot. Obviously, 9/11 was really difficult for us as a community. But, you know, since then, and like you said, since Obama came into office, I mean, the political landscape and the environment was really changing. And to go from that to 2016 and to Trump, I mean, that, that's gotta be just insane. You shared that photo. I wanted to kind of circle back a little bit to it. Can you describe what happened, you know, with that incident and how it impacted you and your community there locally?
Yeah, I think, I mean, it happened throughout the United States. I think the Victoria one got the most attention because of the degree of it. So there was an individual who was, who was what, inspired by Trump's rhetoric? And he had his like, you know, blog postings and whatnot, but he was convinced that if he got into the mosque, he eventually ended up burning it down, eventually got caught by the FBI. Is currently serving 24 and a half years in prison for a hate crime. But initially, it was, if I burn this place down or if I go into this place, I'm gonna find out that these are actually the bad people that Trump has warned us about.
Yeah.
Which is terrifying because, you know, he ended up, like I said, burning the mosque. People could have been inside the mosque when he burnt it, right? It was by chance, by luck that no one was. Because there's often times that, you know, and I'm sure it happens in other mudges, but at least in Victoria, there's a large amount of doctors and sometimes they're on call, so in the hospitals kind of nearby. So they go into the mudges and kind of like take a nap.
Right.
And luckily, there was no one there that night. But, you know, my mind always goes to what happened in Christchurch, right?
Yeah.
So it's just extremely terrifying. So I found out about them, I was in Austin at the time, and I got a call about the mudges on fire. And then by the time I got into town, it was obviously gone.
Yeah.
But I think, like I said, anything that had happened before that point, decisions by myself or my community, we're to avoid that. And what we saw, not only in Victoria, but even here in Austin, is there was a mosque burnt down in North Austin, like Travis.
Right.
There were mudges burned down and vandalized in a lot of parts of this country. There were individuals targeted. And we've seen that continue. By no means do I think that once Trump's got out of office and Biden got in, that Islamophobia just died.
Yeah, yeah. It's definitely still around, yeah.
Yeah, it's still around. So I think since then, because you deal with, and you talked about 9/11 a bit, you deal with, and I was actually living in New York when 9/11 happened.
Oh.
We moved to Texas when I was 12. 9/11 happened when I was 12.
Yeah.
But when something like that happens, I think your sense of security and safety is kind of violated forever, right? You kind of always like, when you walk into a mudge or you're in a group of largely Muslim people, you're always kind of looking behind your shoulder. That is someone watching, is someone there?
Yeah.
So I think, I mean, I just, I just think whether it's going to a mudge in Victoria or going to a mudge in Houston or going to a mudge in Austin, there's a level of like, I don't know what's gonna happen next, right?
I feel like that's kind of the case. And I hate to say this in this world that we're living in, and I think that's why it's so important to get involved. But like, even outside of our community, I mean, I feel like sometimes I feel that way walking into Walmart around a holiday, you know, because
Oh, yeah.
Right? We had Uvalde, you had these mass shootings. I mean, it's just, it's just a lot, I think, that our generation and this next generation of political leaders is dealing with. How would you say, how can you say, community-based organizations that are working in the space of civic engagement, how can they help support just general awareness around running for office or even just getting out the vote? What do you think these organizations can do? Because I know you've been a part of so many of them.
Yeah, I think voter education is really important. I think a vast majority of people don't know the difference between a state rep and a US rep or the duties of either.
Yeah.
People don't see the importance of city council, if I'm going to be completely honest. They're largely unaware of who their city council member is.
Right.
When their, what their city council member does. I mean, now that we're in a runoff, it's frightening the amount of folks who are, who say, oh, I don't know, I don't know who's running. I don't know who's in the runoff. When is the runoff, right? Oh, I thought you won. You got the most votes. And obviously, that's not, I wish that was the case. So I think voter education on, on the different levels of government is really important. And I also think voter education on, on voting, right? Because we are 10 days away until the election.
Yeah.
There's still six more days of early vote. And largely, people are not, not aware. We, we often poll-greet or go out in the community and we tell people about, oh, I've already voted.
Right.
Not in November, you're voting again.
Well, I mean, that's interesting because honestly, I feel like even like in corporate America, I mean, after Thanksgiving, things really seem to shut down. So I can imagine it's gotta be such a challenge to even like alert the community that, hey, there's like a runoff. I want to get into a little bit of some of the issues that you're passionate about here and why you're running. So one of the greatest issues in our post-COVID world has been a rise in mental health issues, which in turn has impacted public safety. What are your views on how state law enforcement deals with cases where mental health can often be a factor? And how would you say the rise of mental health issues relates to the issue of homelessness in major cities like LA, New York, and Austin?
Yeah. That's a good question. I mean, so I think even in cities like Austin, we have a fire EMS department that are underfunded and understaffed. I think that puts more pressure on law enforcement to, at times, go into situations that they're not trained to do, right? I've always been in the mindset that law enforcement needs to be guardians and not warriors, right? And we've seen stats of if an officer deals with someone who's suffering from a mental health crisis, they're, I think, 17 or 18 times more likely to shoot and kill that individual, right? So I think, I think that's why it's important here in Austin. If you call 911, they ask you, do you need to fire EMS, police, or mental health services, right? So I think, I'd love to see the expansion of that.
It's awesome. I didn't know that was a thing. Wow.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, that being said, like, we still are very understaffed for all these things, right?
Yeah.
And I think a lot of that goes into the pay benefits of these people, the not being fully staffed, pensions. A lot of stuff goes into it. And I think overall, just making sure that there's trust and buy-in between the community and those who are sworn in to protect us. So what I'd like to see, you know, whether it's someone suffering from a mental health illness on the street or at their home, like, making sure that we put the right people to take care of them. In terms of our unhoused population and folks suffering from, that are suffering from mental health, like, you know, jailing folks is very expensive. It doesn't solve the issue. Criminalizing homelessness doesn't solve the issue. It does solve the issues getting them the mental health support that they so desperately need. And at times, it's not mental health issues for unhoused folks, it's substance abuse issues.
Yeah.
But if we either allow them to just publicly camp on the streets and not take care of them, or we say, hey, you can't publicly camp, but go and live in the woods and still not take care of them, it's a cycle. I mean, I've been in Austin for, how long have I been here? I have been in Austin for 13 years about. And there's some unhoused folks that I remember seeing at UT, either sleeping on the streets or begging for money. 13 years later, the same people are there because they're not getting the help they need. And I mean, for me, it starts off with a housing-first approach, getting them into some sort of centralized supportive housing, where then they can have the resources like the mental health and substance abuse experts and officials who can take care of them. But until that's done, we're gonna continue to see that cycle.
I mean, and I think it's great that, you know, a lot of people will just, you know, see the people on the streets, right? And they might roll down a window, give them a dollar or two, and think that they've done their part. And it's just, it's so promising to see your passion for this cause. And I know I recently visited LA and I could just see the devastation there as well. I mean, California was like literally like the worst.
Yeah, and I think of Boston, I think at times in Austin, it's only become a talking point when it's a prop on the ballot. But I think it's something that, you know, I look at it as a humanitarian crisis. And I, yeah, I truthfully haven't been to LA, I don't think ever in my life, but I have heard that it's gotten really bad there. And I think it's important to make sure that we take care of the situation here at home in Austin and not just talk about it every few years because it's, it is getting out of control. And I think it does say a lot about us as a city on how we're not taking care of our own. And, you know, all the different factors and sides that this conversation brings on. But I think we can all agree that we don't want to see people sleeping on the streets. Gets below freezing or it's 110 degrees, you know, that's the elements are what's gonna take a toll on a person.
Yeah, absolutely. So along those lines, I wanted to move towards a different issue. So, you know, we are living in such a globalized world where our way of living in the United States is literally impacting climates around the world. And we just witnessed historically devastating floods in Pakistan caused by global warming. In your perspective, how are transportation, housing policies impacting climate change? And what are some policies that you would work on to address this issue that's gonna impact future generations?
Yeah, I think countries like the United States are, you know, our decisions are the reason that a lot of these poorer, underdeveloped parts of the world suffer. I remember, and truthfully, should have kept up better, but I know at a point, a third of the country was underwater in Pakistan. You know, we've seen devastating flooding in places like Puerto Rico as well. And it's always the, you know, I think the term is the global south, but, you know, it's these other places, you know, really, really taking a hit and suffering. I think places like Austin, you know, we have talked about, you know, the green, going green and renewables and solar, I think that's really important. And I think making sure that homes and businesses that pledge to go green or solar have incentives, you know, to do so. I think we're a very car-dependent city, truthfully. And I think investing more in public transit, pushing back against things like the expansion of I-35, which will not only be, has a $5 billion price tag on it. So there's that economic hit. But it's not gonna make it faster to travel. It's actually gonna add on like 18 minutes to travel time.
Oh, wow.
And then the environmental impacts of that are, it's gonna be devastating, right? We've seen it in Houston, right? Houston, I'm sure Dallas, I haven't been to Dallas that often, but Houston has this like mega highways with like 20 lanes or whatever it is. Yeah, it doesn't do anyone any good. It doesn't make traffic, guaranteed Houston traffic is some of the worst I've dealt with in my life. And the environmental impacts of that are horrific. So whether it's investing in sidewalks or bicycle lanes or crosswalks, so people can bike and, and walk and feel safe. Or investing in, you know, in Austin, we're going to see the expansion of our rail and our bus systems. I think that goes a long way, just making sure folks aren't necessarily having to jump in their car to get from point A to point B. I love, like, I ride the rail as much as I can.
Yeah.
I'm a renter in downtown. And the problem right now with the rail though in Austin is that it doesn't stop everywhere. And it's also not equitable. It's, a lot of folks on the east side don't have access to it, you know, as other folks do. So I think the expansion of that, I think, would encourage folks to do it. I mean, I love, it's just such a beautiful thing to just be able to like walk the block, get onto a rail, a light rail, and just like be on your way. You don't have to worry about parking. You don't have to worry about gas. You just, you know, it's not very expensive. I think it's probably cheaper riding the rail back and forth between places than it is driving my, you know, my car. So I think there's little things that we can do and play our part as a city. You know, obviously, on a larger scale, I think countries like the United States need to do more on their end because our decisions are what affect, you know, flooding in Pakistan or Puerto Rico. And I know we've seen floodings in places also like India and Bangladesh. It's the countries that have so little that suffer the most.
Yeah, I know. Since we're on the note about Pakistan, I'm just curious. Many of us have grown up visiting relatives there. Have you visited? And what have those experiences been like for you? And just, I guess, along that same note, how has your immigrant experience shaped your perspective as a candidate for public office?
Yeah, I visited Pakistan quite a bit when I was younger. I felt like when I was two, four, seven.
Yeah.
And then when I was 14, 16, 18. I truthfully haven't gone back since I was 18. I started college after that. Shortly after college, during my college years, my dad passed away. So unfortunately, I haven't had a chance to go, but I remember vividly, what, like six trips in my, you know, first 18, 18 years on earth.
Yeah.
I think the perspective that I have is that I think often folks, whether it be Austin or elsewhere, just talk about their experiences, just being in part of this community their whole life. And I think my experience as a kid of immigrants, where I didn't have a say of where I was gonna be born. So to taking the experiences of my parents, but also the different places that I've been able to live. And I think being able to come to Austin and being a part of community that's taken me in, but then able to give my lived experiences back to this community. And I think as a city, whether it's Austin or Dallas or Houston or New York, we're at our best when we celebrate diversity and different folks. So, you know, and it's also a level of just putting things in perspective, right? Like, you know, and I think when I started off this chat, it was about our seeing poor people in Austin, right? And like relating it back to what I saw in Pakistan.
Yeah.
And I think there's a certain perspective that you get by being in a country like Pakistan and seeing what works really well and what doesn't work. And, you know, and then kind of relating it back to your time and your experience here in the United States. So I think that is a viewpoint that often lacks. I think I did a, I looked at who are elected officials who are Pakistani Muslims in the United States. Like, who work in city, who are elected in city governments. It's few and far between. But I think, and I'm shocked that we don't have representation in cities like, truthfully, the Houston's and the Dallas's and the New Yorks and the LAs, because I think that's such valuable insight and that, that dais is lacking, that city is lacking. And, you know, I, you know, we're 10 days away. I don't know what's gonna happen in 10 days. I hope it's gonna be happy tears and not sad tears, because we know the job's not over. And the job wasn't over when we made the runoff. But if we're able to pull this off, obviously, it's highlighting the issues that the voters care about and voted for us to care about. But it's also making sure that we bring our percept, you know, like our lived experiences into, into the seat.
Right, definitely. So, you know, coming back to Austin and Texas, Texas has been a magnet for real estate investors and business relocations in recent years. How has this surge impacted affordable housing in Austin? And why does this pose an issue for next-generation Texans?
Yeah, I mean, I think Austin is going through a affordability crisis, a housing crisis. I think you can't really deny that. I think to deny that, you are so separated from reality. I don't know what else to say. I think it's the duty of this city to look at what has worked and what hasn't worked in recent years. And, you know, one thing that people often point to is a lack of housing in Austin, but specifically a lack of affordable housing. And the way that Austin at times can build and does build goes back to zoning laws, zoning laws and things in place that have stopped, for lack of better words, like progressive, inclusive building because of the land development code that hasn't been updated since 1984. And I think, I truthfully think that's why we have a lot of the problems we do in the city. We're not able to build where it makes sense, or we're not able to build where the need is there. And what we often see is folks in my generation being priced out of this city, not being able to live in this city. A lot of my friends who I went to school with at UT don't live in Austin anymore. They either have moved to the outskirts of the city, to city places like Kyle or Buta or San Marcos or Leander. Or they fully moved out and moved to like San Antonio or Dallas or Houston because of the lack of affordability. And I think the city or any city is about the people that make it what it is, right? It's not about old buildings as much as it's about, as much as it's about the people who bring in this like rich level of diversity. And I think the moment you lose your people, you lose yourself, right, as a city? So I think it's extremely important for us to look at, you know, what can we do in the short term? What can we do in the interim to make sure that the city does right by folks? Our musicians, our artists, our teachers, our healthcare workers, our service workers. And in the long term, how do we stop this bleeding? Because it is a crisis. And, you know, I'm a renter. And I truthfully can barely afford to rent right now.
I'm a renter as well, and it keeps going up every year. It's like, here's another $100, $200, $300, and you're just like...
Yeah. And then often, like, you know, I believe my rent's gone up by like $600, $700. I would have to double-check the exact number, but I've talked, I've talked to voters when I've knocked on their doors. And this one gentleman said his rent went up by $1,000 and he's gonna have to move out. And there's no rent control in Texas, right? It's a state issue. So we can't do anything as a city level, but, you know, it's just this lack of affordable housing that, you know, people are just being priced out and pushed out. And it's young folks, it's people who have, it's older folks who have lived here, you know, their whole lives. So I think we just have so much work to do.
I agree. Well, Zoheb, we are just almost out of time, but I have one quick question to ask before we go. So you are one of the youngest Pakistani-Americans in the nation, running for a city council position. And you recently got a very exciting endorsement from Senator Elizabeth Warren. What would you say to those who may have initially doubted your age or your experience?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't feel young. I'm 32. I don't know if the video shows, but I have like gray in my beard now.
No, you can't see it.
I don't, I don't feel young at all. That has been a talking point at times, whether in general or in the runoff, that he's too young, he's too inexperienced. And I think my, my, my comment to that is, you know, you highlighted earlier, like, I've done, I've done the schooling side of things, right? I got my undergraduate degree. I've gotten two masters, one from Texas State, one from Rice. They're both relevant to the job that I'm applying for, and that is to be a city council member. I have the experience, you know, working in city governments. I have the experience of doing calls to work. I did policy work at the Texas Capitol. And I've done, I've done the work as an organizer and as an advocate, being in these advocacy spaces and pushing for folks who don't have a voice. And at the end of the day, I think that's the duty of an elected official.
Yeah.
So I think what we've seen with this campaign is a campaign that's stayed on point. We talked about the issues. We don't waver from that and get caught up in white noise. And we're a campaign that's brought a lot of people together who normally haven't felt, haven't felt like they had a seat in this political process, whether it's, you know, elected officials or groups or, you know, just different community groups, you know, in the city. It's really important to make sure that we're Um, it's 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 really important to make sure that we're as inclusive and and opening um uh as we can be. So you know, I I I may be young, but I I also have a lot of energy. Uh, I also have a lot of, you know, uh, you know, fresh takes on on a lot of issues. Um, and I I think it's sometimes, you know, like I said, I'm there, I feel old. Uh, I feel old running for the seat, but, you know, I I we see younger young folks run for office, whether it be uh city council or state house or US house.
Right.
The ones who, the young ones who get in, like, um, the the change and the good and the things they bring up and the energy that they have, like, it it's so uh it's refreshing to see. So I'm I'm just gonna be one council member out of ten council members, you know, but it's gonna be the people who helped me get there.
Yeah.
And who I want to still be a part of the process, uh, that'll that'll make the difference.
Well, I am definitely inviting the Pakistani American community to support you in this runoff. Azai, can you share your website with us where people can go to learn more and to support you?
Yeah, the the website's zoforAustin, so that's Z O for F O R Austin dot com. Uh, they could learn more about the campaign, uh bio about myself, issues we're running on, who's supporting us, um, as well as um how to get involved. Um, we're ten days out. If you don't live in Austin, I would say the best way to get involved is uh to phone bank or to donate. Um, it helps a lot.
Perfect. Well, thanks, everyone. You heard it here, zoforAustin.com. Uh, congratulations on making it this far and we are sending you lots of positive thoughts, dohas, good vibes, and uh wish you all the best. Thanks, everyone, for tuning into Connections, and we'll be back in a couple of weeks. Hasan alaikum.
So, thank you.